Are you guys ready? You all ready? Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, April 20th, 2023. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the March 30th, 2023 minutes. Any board members have any corrections on comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved. Four in favor, none against. Moving along on the agenda. The first matter, we have a site plan review, 21 Crispin Ave. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Land Smart LLC to construct and operate a veterans' education and housing facility at the above address. The proposed facility will include classrooms, meeting space, an associate office, and 12 temporary residential units. The subject property is located in a traditional, single-family zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 to construct greater than three residential units. May we hear from the applicant, please? Yes, come to the microphone, please, sir.
Hi, Dean Jenkins, Land Smart LLC. I know we had sent out a memo, but we're requesting a, to temporarily postpone this for about a month. I'm hoping that we can get on the agenda for a month. The engineer's not in, but it's kind of fortuitous because I think in retrospect, it would be best if I sit down with the neighbors and kind of have a couple of meetings to discuss whatever we need to do out there that could make sense for people. So, you know, I think, I think, I think that I'm just requesting a postponement so that we can get on the gender, the agenda for about a month from now.
So looking at future dates, I don't know how far out you're looking if we, let's see. So today is the 20th. We have May 15th, then June 5th. I don't know how far out you're looking for, Mr. Jenkins.
I'm going to have to do May 15th because I'm getting, I'm having surgery at the end of May. So I think it would be best if I did it prior to that. So.
Yeah, I know as planning staff did receive a letter that was forwarded to us that your engineer couldn't be here and other people, principals, present the project this evening? Is that correct, sir?
That's, that's correct.
What's the wish of the board to grant the continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing for 21 Crispin Ave until May 15th.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Second by Caleb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes.
Mr. Chairman, I will not be voting. When this petition comes forward, I'll, I'll need to recuse myself.
So Mr. Fischett won't be voting. So we have three in favor for the continuance. So anybody here this evening that's here for this matter, the matter will be on for the 15th. It will not be advertised again, but it will be scheduled for May 15th for that public hearing. Thank you very much.
And if I may, I will be sending something out very quickly to the, to the, all the abutters that were on the initial list to set up a meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
We did receive one letter, Carver Saunders, from one of the neighbors, Mr. Jenkins. We did receive one letter today from one of the neighbors. So Dylan, maybe you can forward that to you so you know what.
I have.
Oh, okay. You have it already? Okay, thank you. Okay. So yeah, if you can make up that meeting with them, that would be very helpful and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. But that matter will be continued to May 15th. Okay. So moving along, we have a zoning approval and we have one, two, three, four public shade tree meetings. Do we have anybody here tonight for the, the tree hearings? Anybody present here tonight for the tree hearings? Anybody from planning staff? I'm not planning staff. I'm DPW for the tree hearings. No? Okay. So I've been informed by planning staff that we have, there is four scheduled public hearings for shade trees on this evening. We have a public shade tree hearing for 30 Gorm Street. We have one for 221 Moore Street. We have one for East Merrimack Street and Brown Street. And we have another one for 49, 54, and 79 Highland Ave. I've been informed by our associate planner that the public notices were not listed on the appropriate trees to satisfy the notice requirement for these four hearings this evening. And there's nobody here from Department of Public Works. So since we can't go forward on these matters, I will make a recommendation that we continue all four matters to our next planning board meeting, which is May 1st. And I'll ask that Dylan reach out to Department of Public Works and let them know that the matter's been continued. And hopefully they can post the notices on the appropriate trees and it'll be all set to go. So Dylan, I don't know if you want me to make a motion one at a time or does the four cover it, the blanket appropriately?
That's up to you. I'm not sure.
What's that?
I'm not sure if it's supposed to be done one at a time or it can be.
Well, okay. I make a recommendation that we continue 30 Gorm Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a recommendation that we continue 221 Moore Street to May 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes as well. Shade tree hearing, East Merrimack Street and Brown Street, make a recommendation that we continue to May 1st. Motion is made in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's continue to May 1st. I'll make a motion that we continue the public shade hearing on 49, 54, and 79 Highland Ave to May 1st.
Is it May 15th?
May 1st.
Oh, May 1st, I'm sorry. May 1st. Second by Caleb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those matters have been continued. I think that completes our agenda?
There, there is the.
Oh, okay. Wait. Nope, I missed one. Okay, we got 38 Nelson Ave. Okay. Proposed zoning amendment. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to ordinance to amend the code of ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by extending the existing traditional two-family zoning district to include an area presently zoned, traditional, single-family at 38 Nelson Ave in Lowell. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, my name is John Geary of Gary and Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mr. Somdeh Sisinkam. Mr. Sisinkam owns and lives at 38 Nelson Ave as his primary residence with his wife and family. As the chairman mentioned, we have petitioned the city council on behalf of the applicant requesting that 38 Nelson Ave be rezoned from its current zoning district of traditional, single-family to that of traditional, two-family. The traditional two-family district abuts this property along Seneca Street. I've provided the, the board with a copy of GIS plan from the city showing the different number of two-family homes in proximity to this property. There, I should also point out, there are several multifamily homes in the, in the close vicinity to the property. So the purpose of that plan is to show the board that rezoning this property is, is in character with the neighborhood and can be done without any detriment to the, to the neighborhood. The applicant has owned and lived at this property for well over 20 years and would like the opportunity to create an additional dwelling unit for his family to grow at this property in a cost-effective manner. So considering the current state of the real estate industry, which has historically low demand and historically high prices, we, we think this is a good alternative. I'd also point out to the board that the creation of another dwelling unit at this property is consistent with Lowell 2025 Housing's Choice Plan by creating an additional market-rate housing within the city. Dylan has prepared some comments relative to this application. The comments are all factual in nature. I'll basically cover what I just reiterated. And Dylan also mentions that the surrounding properties are a mix of single-family, two-family, and more dense multifamily properties. So our hope tonight is that we can get a favorable recommendation from this board to the city council so that the city council can take the next step and make a vote on this proposal. Happy to answer any questions that the board members may have. Thank you.
Counselor, and I just checked with the chairman as well, unless any other members have, I don't seem to have the GPS.
Well, I brought some extras, so I'm happy to provide.
If you could, please.
I don't remember seeing anything.
No, I didn't get.
So it's, it's, the plan is in there?
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the one that's helpful. I didn't, okay. The counsel, we seem we just got this. Can you explain this to us? I see there's some that are bolded. So is that telling us something if you could?
Absolutely.
Sure.
So the, so the, the subject property is highlighted in yellow.
Excuse me, that way I just looked for some of the pictures when I went to visit the site.
That's what I'm doing too. Because from what I can see, counsel, I think you even missed some multifamilies.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I purposely didn't include the multifamily. There were so many two-families. I thought that was.
I got you.
Evidence enough.
Oh, yeah.
But there are. There's a, adjacent to this property, there's a multifamily.
Yeah, it's a huge, that's a huge property, actually. And it's got, it looks like it has assigned parking spots in front of it. And it has a curb cut of about 40 feet.
Right. Directly across the street, there's a two-family and then, you know, throughout the neighborhood.
Yeah, split.
And it's adjacent to the Rivers Edge Development, which is, you know, many duplexes.
I guess one of the, it's just not a logical demarcation of the, I mean, it's not spot zoning. It's stretching it out, but it's just, you know, the logical is right down the middle of the street.
Right.
And it's just pulls that one lot over.
It is. You know, I suppose that they, you know, logically, they could have pulled this all the way over to the other side of this property and up where there are many two-families.
Right.
But they didn't. So, so we've got to request.
So you're talking about moving it from Seneca to Savatoga that way?
No.
Oh, the other direction?
I was talking about if you look at the, if you look at the plan drawn by, by Landplex.
Yeah.
It, we're just rezoning. So the green highlighted line is what's going to be pulled into the TTF zone.
It's just that one lot. It goes down the middle of Seneca and then when it gets there, it goes.
Yeah. We don't really have the ability to request rezoning of other lots.
And I suspect at the time, because I'm involved in a lot of that, a lot of the, the residents that were in single families, it was kind of a mix and didn't want to see the density increase. I suspect that's, that's where the cutoff was. So. And of course, as you know, zoning requests changes. There's no requirement for notification of the abutters. There's no posting on the site. So it's hard to. I mean, at the end of the day, it's just this one property, but obviously it's.
Right. It's this one property. It's in, you know, again, I would, I would suggest that it's in character with the neighborhood. I think it would be difficult to argue that it's not.
Yep. I, I wouldn't disagree with that, counsel.
So at this point in time, I'll, I'll turn the, the public hearing over to see if anybody would like to speak in favor of the rezoning. Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? I take it Dylan, we have nobody on Zoom tonight? No? Okay. So. Anybody that can speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. So we have none in favor, none in opposition. Anybody with any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Okay, now I'll turn it back over to the board. Yeah, these are the pictures I took, you know. Yeah. I'll just share in the pictures that I took when I was there because it's the White House with the, I don't know, what do you call it where the car was on the side there with the.
Carport.
Carport. That's the way they're looking for you.
Yeah, or carport.
Which is a good sized one. Holds a few cars, huh?
And there would be an addition to the house so that it would, it would be a two-family. It would, I don't think the intent is to convert what's existing into a two-family. You have to expand it to some degree.
So, so maybe a question for, for staff or I guess.
Go ahead, Caleb. Yep.
So all these two-families and also multifamily, they will be non-conforming units, right? Because they are in TSF.
Correct.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah. So I, I, I would agree like, you know, having more awkward delineation is, I would not prefer it, but at the same time seems like, seems like the whole neighborhood needs to be upzoned and eventually, I mean, to reflect what is there now. So, I mean, I, I don't think this is a big ask in that regard.
I would agree. Anything further? I mean, Caleb, no?
No, no.
Is there anything, anything further?
I also saw the multifamily next door.
No, I, I agree with what Caleb just said. I mean, it's, and this ask does not affect anybody else. And it wouldn't be, I mean, I don't think the abutter next door could complain. I think that's might be a four-family or.
Or across the street.
Or across the street. So, you know, given that, really looking at it, like I said, as, as an exercise of how you, a demarcation of the zone, probably not ideal, but when you look at the surrounding land use, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Richard, any questions? Thank you.
I have no questions.
No? So with, is he going to make a two-family out of there? So I take it down to build up too?
He would, he would renovate the property.
Renovate it? Okay.
Yes, to make it a two-family. It's not currently a two-family.
Yeah.
So, yeah, some work would be required. We don't think he'll need any relief, but if we do, we have to go before the zoning board.
It's nice to have that little Seneca Street on the side there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, especially if he's doing any additional work there. I mean, to have that little buffer zone and have your own little, little dead-end street as a side yard, I would call it.
Yeah. He really moved to the neighborhood in 1984 or 1986, 87, when he, when he, a few years after moving into the city, coming over to, to the US. And he's, you know, been in the neighborhood ever since, loves it. You know, his family's there with him. It's an opportunity to, you know, multi-generational living essentially by being able to create another dwelling unit at this property. And having the separate space, separate living space.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns up there looking at it. And I mean, obviously, what we've dealt with in the past in the years up there with all the other development that's hopefully going to continue to go in there.
What was that? I'm sorry.
I said, and hopefully for the new development, that may be going in there.
Right.
That I know we've been on hold on for a little bit with the Housing Authority and the.
Right.
Stuff of that nature. And what's been approved, I mean, the houses that have been approved in that area and the ones that have been approved up around 1400 Motors used to be years and years ago.
Dominion, right.
And all that. Those, those are coming along really nice.
Yep.
There's a lot of the new building up there. It's starting to look really nice.
Significant improvements to the neighborhood.
Oh, for sure. For sure. I mean, you know, compared to the old Julian steel. And I know we, we did a lot of work on that years and years ago, and then it stalled for a little while. And I see recently it might be coming back before us. So hopefully that would be something we can help improve on in that neighborhood. So. So I have no objection. So, so what's the request for the board to make a recommendation to the city council?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend a, give a positive recommendation to the council on, on the, the following merits that although noting that it is not the ideal demarcation for zoning district, it does affect just the one parcel in the requested change in the zoning is consistent with the, the development within the, the site, within that, within the proposed site. It's consistent with, with the existing use. Which pretty, you know, that spelled it all out right there.
Right.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion is made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? No. So the recommendation is four in favor and none against to recommend to the city council for the recommendation of a zoning change. Counsel, do you have a date for the council yet or?
That will, that will occur next. I'll work with, with Dylan and Fran and try to figure out what that will be.
Okay. Well, good luck. Good luck, sir. Wish you well.
Thank you very much.
I mean, it's nice to see somebody who's come over here, worked here hard and now, you know, and want to stay in the neighborhood and continue to grow in the neighborhood. It's, it's a positive thing.
Exactly the intent here.
It's positive. Everything's positive.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel.
Moving along on the agenda. Any of the board members have any further comments or follow-up?
Just regarding the historic board, we did not meet. Very few public hearings scheduled. Our next meeting is. May 8th. And hopefully we'll have some agenda items to cover.
So I have one announcement. I have a copy of a letter that was addressed to Mr. Lockhart from our city manager, Mr. Goldman, which is dated April 11th and then received April 14. It is this pleasure that I reappoint you, Mr. Lockhart, to the Lowell Historic Board for the City of Lowell for term expiration in February 28th, 2025, or such time thereof until such successor is appointed and qualified. Your appointment is as Lowell Planning Board member. Your continued interest to serve is welcome and appreciated. So that's from our city manager. So thank you, Richard. We appreciate you representing our historic board as a member of the planning board. Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes.
Any other board members have any further comments? And if not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, just something.
Sure.
That'll be eventually coming here, I suspect. Excuse me. But last night, there was a city neighborhood subcommittee meeting held in the mayor's reception room and Dylan was actually there. And regarding the, what's being obviously discussed here in the city, the accessory dwelling unit proposed ordinance, and I think it was a two-hour meeting, somewhere around there. I thought it was, it was a good meeting. It was a dialogue. And I just think, even if, if people ask any members of the board to just understand what's being discussed, at least being proposed, is a by right ordinance to put in a rental apartment in single-family homes in every zone in the City of Lowell. So, you know, obviously it gets into the nuts and bolts of, of, of what's, the conditions are and, and the requirements. But regardless of what the requirements are, then there is a provision to, if you don't meet those requirements, to go before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. So a discussion and debate is taking place. You know, the national talking points are, is that it allows people to age in place. And they, they talk about it as an in-law apartment, but this is not, this is not restricting it for family members, which most of the area communities restrict it to family members. And it's more of an in-law apartment. This is a, this is to create rental units throughout the city that can house a family member. But again, it's just, it's clear, it just needs to be clear when we're discussing this, what is being discussed and what is being proposed. So stay tuned. I think there will be a lot more discussion on this as we go forward. I know the zoning subcommittee, they had four hearings on this. And I believe there'll be some motions probably filed tomorrow by some counselors for Tuesday night discussion. And, you know, look forward to the discussion and debate. And I really just want people to understand what's being discussed. I think most people, when you talk about an accessory dwelling unit for a family member, it's hard to oppose that, right? Age in place, you can have a caregiver. I think it's a logical thing. But then when you tell them, oh, no, this allows you by right to have, build an apartment and rent it out.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm not for that. But that's not how a lot of the proponents are, are framing it. So there needs, needs to be a good upfront discussion about this and we'll see what direction it goes in.
Thank you, Mr. Fischett.
Jerry, I mean, another, I think, interesting part is how does it differ from two-family dwelling? I know, like, ownership being one of them.
So this is becomes the, it's a good point, right? So when, right now, the way the draft is written and when you first apply for this, you have to certify that this is your, your primary residence and that you will reside there. And then there is, you know, that's, there's also recorded as well. But the challenge is, especially if you're creating a rental unit, and a lot of people did testify at the, at the hearing last night, is the city can't enforce codes and ordinances that are on the, on the books right now. You know, I've been providing financing all my life for people. They get an owner-occupied mortgage at a, at a very advantageous rate and then.
Rent it out.
Ah, then they no longer live there after a while. So, so certainly that, that, that's some of the concern. There are several ordinances out there that do require recertification of this. And, you know, there's, there just needs to be a lot of discussion on that. There's a lot of investors that buy in the City of Lowell. And certainly you can buy it and you can rehab it, put a dwelling unit, live in there while you're doing it. Then you can turn around and sell it. And so it's, there's, there's just a lot of moving parts. When you say ADU to somebody, I think it means something different to almost every person. And so we need to be on the same page as to what's being presented. A lot of them that have allow for rental units, even for the in-laws, they all require a special permit, not by right. But there, it's split in the state. It's changed. Now, it's changing as we speak. There's several communities revisiting this. And one of the, you know, one of the talking points that creates affordable units, but in reality, it, you know, the cost to actually create a unit, put a full, you know, kitchen, a bath, is pretty expensive. And then there has to be this one utilities that comes through the home. And your taxes are going to go up, the value goes up. So the likelihood of that creating, only maybe because of the sheer size of it, the rent will be a little smaller, but in comparable square.